Good evening. Welcome to this evening's Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. It is February the 4th, 2025. We are gathered here at approximately 7:00 PM in Yukon City Council Chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street. This evening we'll have our invocation given by Pastor Deborah Kaufman from Chisholm Trail Presbyterian Church. Please rise if you're able, followed by the flag salute.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening for the city council meeting, please remind us that we are yours, that we are here by your grace and your kindness. Please help us to do the best that we can in our cities. Help us to be good citizens and to help those who need assistance. Please, dear Heavenly Father, we just want to tell you thank you so much for all the folks that are willing to serve as city elected officials, for those who serve as firemen, for those who serve as police officials, and as well for those who are teaching our young folks. And dear Heavenly Father, we just want to give you thanks and praise and glory for all the blessings that you let flow down upon our community and help remind us that this is a great place to live. We ask these things in your name, oh Lord, amen. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pillmore.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
Shriver.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
This time we'll have a proclamation given by Mayor Matt Dukes of Midwest City to Sarah Sheeman.
Yes, she does.
Sarah? Hi, how are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, I am Matt Dukes, I'm mayor of Midwest City, but I'm also the district representative for Oklahoma Municipal League. I'm sure all of you would agree with me that our employees are our number one asset in any community, and we have to honor their service and their dedication to your community. And Sarah, you've reached a milestone. In 25 years of service to the city of Yukon and everybody I've talked to tonight has glowing reviews of your service. And... But in honor of that, I want to wish, I want to present you with a certificate of 25 years of service, and you're on the OML honor roll now for 25 years of service. And with that, attend in honor of your service. So, thank you very much. Thank you for the service that you've given to the city of Yukon, and may God bless anything else you want to do in the rest of your life.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Karen.
Speech? You want to give a speech, Sarah? No speech?
I would say that I think...
Is there a speech component?
No.
Thank you, Mayor.
You don't have to. Congratulations.
At this time, we'll have our visitor section of our agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time and state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to city of Yukon business. Do we have any visitors at this time? Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the visitor section?
I have no requests, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, seeing no visitors, at this time we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the Yukon Municipal Authority Consent Docket. This, this item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 14th, 2025, and payment of material claims in the amount of $477.50. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. This time we'll consider a motion to enter into an agreement with the Williams Family Investments LLC to allow for outside water service from the city of Oklahoma City at the location of 15099 West Highway 66, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving, uh, a motion approving the renewal of the agreement between the city of Yukon H, and HBC CPAs and advisors to prepare the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, at an approximate cost of $33,150. Do I hear a motion?
Can we change that to June 2025?
Uh, June 30th, 2024.
2025.
2024 is the correct year.
Is it correct?
That, that's my mistake.
Okay, then it was a clerical?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? You know, one of the key things that we discussed during our forensic review is the need to evaluate some of our long-term vendors, and HBC CPA advisors will certainly be one of those as we've done our audit for the last few years. This particular engagement has already started, is about halfway done, quite frankly, but we will take up the matter of our long-term relationship with our CPAs and, and audit firm for the following fiscal year. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Similarly, we'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. The item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 14th, 2024, payment of material claims in the amount of $1,198,713.83, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. A revised lease agreement between you, city of Yukon and Clarity Telecom LLC Blue Peak for co-location of their equipment at the EOC bunker at the cost of, to them, of $3,000 per month, with revised start date of April 1st, 2025, striping to be completed by Action Safety Supply LLC using state contract SW776 in the amount of $100,000 to be paid from the 2024-2025 Streets Capital Budget. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? One of the items that I discussed with the city manager earlier this week surrounds the selection of roads for striping. We need to ensure that we do not stripe roads that are in very poor condition and are likely due for repaving or, or significant repairs. And the city, city management team is in full agreement with that, so they're, they're looking at the items that were slated for this $100,000 of striping. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes. At this time, we'll have our reports from city officials, beginning with an update on the street concrete panel replacements, phases two and three, by Public Works Director Arnold Adams.
Good evening, I am very happy to report we are finished with phase two completely, and we have finished four locations on phase three as of this evening. We anticipate that that would complete phase three in 30 to 45 days.
When you, when you look at phase three, how many locations were covered on phase three?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine locations, and you think that'll take how many weeks to finish that up?
About another 30 to 45 days.
Okay.
Well, obviously.
As we think about, I'm already thinking ahead to phase four, uh, and I know you've covered a lot of ground with the phase one, two, and three, would it be possible for yourself, the city manager, um, and Chief Corin to connect on, I mean, the police department is driving the streets every day. I'm really curious to get kind of a grassroots view of any panels that, maybe an independent, you know, the streets, the streets guys are out there looking at them, but could we get a view that the police department would have as they cover their, their, uh, territory of any panels that they're like, hey, this is a little rough here?
Absolutely.
Because I think we're kind of getting to the, we're getting done with the worst of them, and now it's going to be like smaller improvements.
Absolutely.
Chief, chief, would that be okay? Chief Corin?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Arnold. At this, at this time, we'll have an update on the Fire Department Training Facility by Chief Sean Voight.
Good evening. So I'm happy to announce that on Monday, February 3rd, we received notice from OEM that we received the Training Tower Grant that we applied for back in August of 2024.
That's outstanding.
And that's a 50/50 grant. So, yeah, we're really happy about that. You know, the Training Tower was approved in the capital budget, so with this grant, we think we're going to reduce, you know, we know we'll reduce a large portion of the amount that we have to spend out of capital. Um, we've also sent out an RFP for the tower and had several contractors attend our pre-bid meeting, and we did receive a bid, you know, that meets all of our specs. So on the council meeting on February 18th, I'll bring to you guys for a request for the council to accept the OEM grant, the Training Tower bid, and then the contract with the approved vendor, and then we can start bringing grant.
Are there any options or add-ons to this Training Tower that we ought to reconsider, given that we have some extra budget here?
Um, there are a couple little options, but actually, uh, from what we put into the capital was pretty much bare bones. We, when we decided to apply for the grant, we did add in capital, we had $443,000 for it. Our grant's for $542,000. I know that I've talked with Arnold about adding some concrete to where we can possibly take the trucks and spot them around the whole tower. Um, that's more realistic training that way, so we're hoping we can do some of those things by getting this grant.
I think that's huge.
Is it still multi-level, three stories?
Yes, three stories.
Perfect.
So we can use it for, you know, rappelling, too, high-angle rescue and such.
Awesome.
Victim rescue on several stories, so it's going to be really good for the department. Right now, we try to simulate that type of training inside the Bay Area in our hose tower stuff, and it's just not the same, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work, Sean. You guys are on a roll on the grants.
Yeah, we're happy.
Keep it up. All right. Now we'll consider approving the renewal of the agreement between the city of Yukon and HBC CPAs advisors to prepare the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, at an approximate cost of $33,150. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? And, um, Doug, this is, the $33,150 is total for both YMA and the city, correct?
Yes, and, uh, we require a single audit for the federal money that we spent on ARPA this last year, so it includes that, it rolls that in.
It's a single dollar amount, even though we're approving it under YMA and Yukon City.
Yes.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Uh, we'll, uh, carry on with item number five, skip over item four. We'll consider a motion to enter into an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for the construction of an at-grade public pedestrian crossing on the east side of Yukon Parkway, south of Ranchwood Boulevard, included in the multimodal trail TAP grant project. State Job 37940 (04), including $10,000 rights fee and estimated project cost of $71,573, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a request for final plat at 1201 Health Center Parkway by Integris Rural Health, Inc., as recommended by the planning commission. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider a motion to enter into an agreement with Williams Family Investments LLC to allow outside water service from the city of Oklahoma City at the location of 1599 West, 15099 West Highway 66, as recommended by the planning director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving asphalt repairs on First Street from Vanaman Avenue North to 800 South First Street to be paid out of the 2024-2025 Street Capital Improvements in the amount of $200,000 using 2023 Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving with Drainage, Water, and Sewer Contract with Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is absolutely, absolutely needed, so, very good.
You drive First Street a lot?
I've been on First Street a lot.
When it says 2024, 2025, that's on next year's capital improvements, not?
It's this year, this fiscal year's capital improvements.
Okay.
Yeah.
That got approved in our budget?
That's correct.
Okay. Just clarifying.
And it was, and it was, it was not only where the street capital improvements named, but it was named for this particular location, so we're just getting around to this particular location. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving a budget amendment and the associated expenditure of funds from the city of Yukon Police Pest Account for the purchase of various police equipment as itemized in a memorandum of understanding, as recommended by the police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving Resolution 2025-02, a resolution to enter into a project agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for I-40 Garth Brooks Boulevard and I-40 interchange ramps, JP38438 (04), with a total obligation of $439,500 to be paid by the city of Yukon. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving the revised Kimball Bay Pool renovation project, including the approval and authorization of Kimball Bay Pool renovations bid specifications, as recommended by the Parks and Rec Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
What kind of, uh, renovation we're going to do on this? I know we toured it all over the summer, Ryan. That thing's in pretty bad shape, so I'm kind of curious what we're going to do. Do what?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Please, Ryan.
Good evening, so, uh, this would be a request for a couple of different things. So, um, what was improved in the, the capital budget, uh, part of that was a, a project of sand blasting or hydroblasting, um, doing some repairs afterwards, and then an epoxy paint coating on the pool shell. Uh, so that would still be part of this project. So the first part of this request is to go out for bid for that part of the project. And you'll see on there in your packet there, I just gave you, um, some information, some pictures of kind of what it looks like after our staff has painted that. That's what it looks like after, after a full year of operating it. So you can see there's many layers of, of paint on there, who knows how many, but many, many, many years of it. Uh, so this process takes all that paint off of there, gets it down to the original shell, and then they apply the epoxy paint on top of that. That's the same project we did at City Splash this previous year. Um, so that would be the, the first part of that project. The second part is a little bit of a revision of what we requested in the capital budget, not in terms of the amount, but in terms of the project. So we were looking at doing a, a project on the gutters there and putting in some stainless steel gutters. Uh, as we continue to have conversations with these companies, they informed us, you know, if you, if you do this, you're not going to get as much benefit as you think unless you do this additional work, um, which was going to be about twice what we had budgeted for. And so we went ahead and started looking at some other options. Um, so you can see some of the things that we're looking to do with those pictures that I provided you as well. The first one would be replacing the exterior fence. Uh, if you look at that, you can see it's rusted, it's, it's bent and curling in places, it's, it's coming off, um, of the posts. The posts are leaning in certain places, and it's just in rough shape. Uh, so that would be part of that project. We would be looking at replacing the metal shade structures that we have out there with some actual shade canopies, like we have at City Splash, would be part of that. Uh, the chemical building structure that we have out there, which you can see in your pictures there as well, uh, is in rough shape as well, both the roof on there and the siding on it, not in good shape. We'd like to replace that. Um, we'd also like to, uh, get so, get a backup motor for Kimball. Um, if, if our motor were to go down in the middle of summer, basically, we would be closed the rest of the summer if we don't have that backup motor. And so that would be something that we would really like to do as part of this as well. We'd be looking at replacing the water slide, some concrete repairs, and then possibly some additional side amenities, as long as it falls within the budget.
How much did we allow for that? Can you remind me?
Uh, $235,000 is the total project cost. Um, the, the sand blasting and the hydroblasting is going to be over the $50,000. That's why we'd like to go out for bid on that. The rest of that is to be determined. It looks like the fence is going to be around $25,000. Uh, the, the pool motor would be between $4,000 and $5,000, most likely. The slide would be around $30,000. Uh, the shade canopies, we're not quite sure on that. We're still getting quotes back on that, um, and so that's some of the numbers that we have so far.
Underneath that rock wall when we toured it, that, a lot of that tile started to fall off, as well as, what was, what was the problem with the gutter? Something about our chemicals not being efficient when we clean or something?
Just age, just age. I mean, the pool is 50, 60 years old, I believe, so those were original on there, so it's just starting to, to have issues with the gutter system. And that's why we were looking at doing the stainless steel gutters, to be able to cut below that, place those stainless steel gutters on there and resolve that issue. But again, the, the price was kind of the, the limiting factor on that.
What was the original budget for the stainless steel guttering? You said it doubled, but what was the original?
Uh, that $235 included the hydroblasting and the sand blasting, as well as that project.
I'm talking about the product, oh, including that as well?
Yes, yep.
Is this just a Band-Aid?
Uh, some of it would be, some of it, though, could be transferred to be used in, in other ways. For example, the, the fence, even if we were to do an update on the pool, I believe the fence could still be used, as long as we weren't expanding there. The, the shade canopies could be either moved to a, a park or a different area, uh, if, if we were doing away with that area. Uh, so there are some things that could be utilized still, uh, but some of it is to, to keep things going, absolutely.
Would it be better to save our money and just do it right?
Well, uh, I would, I would recommend this personally, uh, just because I, I don't know if we're, we're headed in that direction at all, and so we would like to do something.
I think the key, I think this $235, you know, or $200,000 will likely, you know, get us another couple summers of, of use with Kimball, but we need to keep in mind a budget in the next couple of years, you know, next two or three years for something that's more, uh, you know, game-changing.
Just not a big fan of spending $240,000 for a couple of years to...
Well, I mean, the al, the alternative is that, that we don't spend it, but we probably can't. We probably end up not having the pool open, right? So it's, it's a, I mean, it's...
The pool is desperately needed, but we need to...
And then, and this...
The pool's in bad, bad shape. Oh, it's in horrible shape.
It's in tough shape, but I think the other thing, Ryan, that you have built into this bid is, is for this work to get done in the April-May timeframe in, in order to open in late May, right?
Correct. Another thing I'll, I'll add as well is, when they do the hydroblasting, there will be some repair work that they'll do as well. So if there's gutter issues or things like that, they're going to be an immediate issue, they're going to be bidding to, to do that work as well, to, to, to move things along at Kimball.
I, I kind of wonder, I mean, I, I like the bid that you've put together, it's very thorough, and I read through it all. I, I wonder with the scope of work, if you'll get one company to, to really give, like, the scope of work is a little varied with the shade structure and stuff, but maybe, maybe these vendors have some subcontractors that do that kind of work regularly for them?
So the thought is to do the bids separate for the, the hydroblasting and sea blasting project. The rest of this would not be as part of that bid.
Okay, good.
Be separate.
Ryan, can you, can you remember, how many people go to the pool every year, every summer? What's the estimated number?
Put me on the spot on that. Um, I can get that information to you.
It's, it's a busy pool, though.
Yeah.
I think there were about 10,000 attendees from my recollection. My recollection, because I remember doing the math and saying, okay, you're open about 100 days, it's about 100 people a day in different, and the two pools are open. The two pools had different schedules, I, as I recall as well, in terms of when open swim was at Kimball versus City Splash.
Correct, we try to, yeah, to vary it that way, and that, that is correct. That 100, little over 100 per day is what we...
Where do you get swim lessons to, is it at Kimball?
Correct, yes.
So this park's pretty, pretty poor. Uh, what, is there any plans in this budget to fix the little waiting kid pool? What's the story with the...
That's something we could look at, that, that wasn't currently part of the plan, but that's something we can look at.[1569.66] That's something we could look at. That, that wasn't currently part of the plan, but that's something we can look at. We don't, we don't know for sure what the issue is. So that, that's something we'd have to dig around to, to find out.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Ryan, for bringing these pictures. It helps us to really understand it. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving the resurfacing of Kimball Park Parking Lot on the north side of Kimball Bay Pool in the amount of two hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and six cents to be completed by Brewer Construction LLC using the twenty twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving with Drainage, Water, and Sewer Contract as recommended by the Parks and Rec Director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Was this in the budget? That's in the capital improvement budget?
Yes, it is in the capital improvement budget, the park maintenance capital improvement budget. It is about five thousand dollars over what that line item is. However, we've spent, underspent on some items in that budget, and so we're comfortable doing that.
When I look at the quantities that are presented in the Brewer itemized list, I, and then I did like a little Google Maps view of this parking lot. I was just trying to understand, like, the square footage of what we're paving. Are we taking up asphalt? Are we milling the whole thing and putting down? What are we doing?
So it's, it's, it's a mixture. So half of it is, is like a, a full-depth asphalt patch. And then, so that, that is on the, the north half of the parking lot, and then the second, the south side of that is in the edge milling.
For the second half of that. The piece that's closest to the, to the pool building is in better shape than, than the one that's closer to the, the residential area.
Correct.
Arnold, have you looked at, at this particular parking lot with?
Yes, I worked on the, was putting the capital budget together.
Yeah, okay.
So the south end, what they're saying would be edge on, would be mill edge, just on the edge, and then the entire parking lot overlaid.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, sir. And you're going to do some, I saw some subgrade repairs as well that are itemized there?
Correct.
Are those pretty well, I mean, they were, they were quantified in the quote the Brewer gave us. Is that, are they pretty well defined? You know what areas of the subgrade are deteriorated?
I don't know if you can speak to that better than I can, Arnold. That's, that's not my area of expertise on that, so I don't want to say the wrong thing on that.
So when we looked at this, it was over a year ago, but we just put a percentage on it, estimating how much we thought. Some of that will be determined when they mill that, when they take the top layer off. But I believe there's plenty in there for base repair.
Okay.
Actually, I think there'll be a little, I think we want a little.
Sure.
Okay.
Can this be done, though, in time for swim season, so we can still?
Yes, they, they intend to get it done in April or May. They actually have another project that they've said is going on in the area, and they'll just put that, that right alongside that project.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider convening into executive session pursuant to Oklahoma Statutes Title twenty-five, Section three zero seven, B four, for confidential communications with the city attorney concerning a pending investigation, claim, or action relating to roadway construction on the tenth and Cheetec intersection, taking appropriate action in open session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.